Yeah, bring us back to order and we're going back to seven D and our county manager will explain.
I think you've got to read it back.
Got to read it in. Time certain nine o'clock AM for possible action, public hearing, business license revocation. To revoke all business licenses that are delinquent and or noncompliant with county code and allow the business license department to close said accounts.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So I do apologize for having to go back to this. The late backup that you were given this morning had it only printed the front page of each. So there were more than sixty eight licenses that needed to be revoked. There's actually eighty five. And so I, you know, it's it's kind of up to the board if you want to take another vote on that. Just to to.
We can just be official and go ahead and if Commissioner Hendricks would restate her.
Yes.
Motion?
Move to revoke all business licenses that are delinquent and are noncompliant with county code and allow the business license department to close said account using this updated list that we've just received.
Second. And motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor?
If we do public comment one more time too.
And we'll go into public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none online, seeing none in the room. Now we'll go to the vote. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes again five zero. That brings us to the consent agenda. Action will be taken on all items, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Does anyone on the board want one removed? Consideration. Is there anybody in the public that wants one removed? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items twelve A through twelve I.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Hawkeye, second by Commissioner Hendricks. Those in favor say aye. All right, the motion passes five zero. Bring us back to the regular agenda, public hearing on planning items. For possible action to approve the request from Nevada RE Holdings LLC for zoning map amendment to amend the zoning designation from Title X District of M one, General Industrial, C one limited commercial district and RR five fifth rural residential district, twenty acre minimum to the title fifteen district of HI hyphen S heavy industrial suburban consistent with the master plan designation of industrial on three parcels and total approximately nineteen point six acres at seventeen east highway ninety, east highway fifty in Silver Springs, APNs zero one five two seven one ten, zero one five two seven one fourteen, zero one five two seven one seventeen PLZ twenty twenty five fifty. Mr. Cariola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners Lewis, Cariola, Senior Finer presenting. So as read into the record with the description, there are three subject parcels located in Silver Springs. On the left, we see the relative location to the traffic circle in Silver Springs. The parcels are located to the east of the traffic circle and north of highway fifty. The image on the right for this slide depicts the configuration of the three commonly owned parcels, which again do total approximately nineteen point six eight acres in size. This image is from the county GIS application shows the parcels and the surrounding lands as well as some of the development on the site. There are currently, there is currently already large industrial buildings on that western parcel, the largest parcel. And then in the southeast, we can see a cooling pond. This facility was previously used for the production of animal feed and per the applicant's application materials, the intended use for the existing buildings would be for an aluminum cast house for the aerospace industry. These images were provided by the applicant and depict the existing structures. We can see that there's a silo as well as a rather tall building. Director Henderson, myself and some other planning staff were afforded the opportunity to review this building with the applicants. Now I think it's important to note the applicants have changed ownership, but we were dealing with the same person over a year ago when it was a different company that was that owned the property. That tall building is where they would be intending to submit to Lion County Building Department for tenant improvements to construct the cast for the future work that would occur here.
Quick question. It's a different owner or same owner?
Different owner. So now we have the original owners when over a year ago, the applicant spoke to us was a company called Almechs. And now it's Nevada Real Estate Holdings. However, we have the same representative. So maybe for clarifications sake, I I do know that there's been some questions about some of the comments I'd made during the presentation at the planning commission. At that time, I'd mentioned that we'd spent over a year working with the applicants. The reason and I maybe I maybe I shouldn't have phrased it that way. The reason it took so long was partly because of this ownership change. And then partly frankly, because the first application we received was deemed to be incomplete. So it wasn't necessarily that we were working with the applicant to figure out how to process the requested zone change. It was directly related to their change of ownership.
Thank you, sir.
So getting into the master plan designations, as we know, there are, there are two. There's both the master plan designation and then the character district. On the left, we see that the subject parcels are all located within the suburban character district, as is this entire section of Silver Springs. As is typical for suburban character districts in Lion County, there are public utilities available and ready access to roadways. In this case, however, there is not septic. There is the Silver Springs Regional Water Company for that service. But there's a commercial septic that would be under the jurisdiction of the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. On the right, we see the master plan designation of industrial. You'll note that that teal color applies as in the industrial designation to not just the subject parcels, but also the parcels to the west, north and east of highway fifty. In other words, this entire block of Lion County. So now we'll get into the zoning. So I know this map is a little messy as read into the record with the description and is outlined in the staff report. There are currently three different zoning districts over these three parcels. For the planning department, this is problematic when anyone comes forward with proposing development because now we have different development standards, different allowed uses, different buffers, different setbacks. So the the three applicable districts from Title XV currently include heavy industrial suburban, which is the requested designation for all three parcels. But that only applies in the large western parcel. So you can see that sort of that northern two thirds. Along the highway, there's a three hundred foot strip that covers two parcels with the applicable zoning being a neighborhood commercial. Staff, previous staff here in Lion County had done research for this property in the past and we were unable to to find anything to 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 not confirm her research, which was there were no maps showing the neighborhood commercial designation along the highway. There were minutes from a nineteen seventy eight Board of Commissioners meeting where the zoning had been changed to a commercial district. As previously mentioned, the master plan being industrial is not compatible with commercial zoning districts. Additionally, that northeast side of the parcels, the east parcel has rural residential twenty acre minimum zoning. So again, within the master plan districts, neither the the commercial designation would be consistent with the master plan, nor is the the rural residential twenty acre. So the proposed zone change then would change all three parcels to heavy industrial suburban zoning consistent with the master plan designation of industrial and also matching the designation for, you know, per zoning to the west. So I think as far as staff's analysis was concerned, this looked like a pretty simple review from a zoning perspective because the existing master plan is industrial and the zoning proposed is compatible with that. The existing development is industrial in nature. The proposed use, although that's not something we can approve through a zone change, likewise is industrial and I think just as important as any other quality would be clearing up the split zoning for any future development on the site. A chapter fifteen to twenty oh five of Lion County Code includes the findings for zoning map amendments. And I've included here in the slide just summaries from the findings. As already mentioned, the you, the zone change would be consistent with the master plan. There are some policies and goals from the master plan included in the staff report, notably supporting a diverse economic base of the terms used in the goals and policies, being thoughtful about business and industry locations that are consistent with future land use plans. This certainly would move towards that goal. Direct access to ninety five A already exists. Emergency services are provided by Central Lion Fire Protection Districts and Lion County Sheriff's. And then future development on the site will require tenant improvements to the building department. Were they the the new applicant or whomever would be developing the site ever to propose expansion over what now exists as three parcel lines, they would have to revert to acreage for the property. So we have informed them that future development and expansion may require additional entitlements.
Shouldn't that read direct access to highway fifty?
Yes, it should now, and that is my mistake, and I apologize. Yes, direct access to highway fifty is my mistake. So the Silver Springs Citizens Advisory Board did hear this item at their September eighth twenty twenty five meeting and voted to recommend approval to the board five zero on September ninth twenty twenty five. The planning commission heard this item. I voted unanimously six zero to recommend approval. The recommended motion is on the screen and I am, of course, available for question.
Do we have any questions for? I got a couple. One was the applicant here.
I do not believe so. No, sir.
Is he online?
I've not been informed that he would be attending.
Why wouldn't he be here?
I'm not sure I can comment on that, sir.
So I was looking at the the use code of what can go in there and everything. This has been a problematic area for Silver Springs. And this is where guy came from because all those houses are right across the way that if there's any smells, anything that come from that, a guy actually came over there with a gun and over to the old plant that was there. And so they get any kind of smell, anything. And so there's kind of like a need for a buffer zone to me. To me, it doesn't fit the, they've got the heavy industrial on the one, but that's a to to make it all heavy industrial, I think it should be light industrial if anything. Which would fit in that same area, wouldn't it?
It would be compatible with the master plan designation of industrial, yes, sir.
And so to me, why aren't we doing some kind of a buffer? Why would we increase that area? At all. And that's the reason why is because of of that buffer. I wanted to talk to the to the applicant to find out what his, because it's so broad that he could put basically anything in there, wind, solar, whatever. I just don't know a smelting thing for aluminum. I don't know what kind of air pollution or anything else that that even does that I'm concerned with right now. So I would like him to be here, but don't we require people to show up for their applications?
I don't know that that's my call, sir, but I would certainly support any mandate or directive in that direction. I can offer a little commentary.
Go ahead.
What you said, sir. So to start, the the area of heavy of existing heavy industrial suburban zoning does encompass the entirety of the structures. So the requested zoning to heavy industrial was simply to extend and be consistent with the existing split zoning on that largest parcel to the west. Technically speaking, were a new operation come in to be using the existing building through building department tenant improvement permits, there wouldn't even be a requirement for this zone change. Staff actually saw the split zoning and the request to have consistent zoning over these commonly owned parcels sort of as a just a move towards the right direction of consistency with the master plan. I don't know that we had the opportunity to really consider, you know, some of these other qualities you're you're speaking of.
Well, the the old use code that they used for the plant was different than what they're gonna use now, right? What section of it, right?
Well, maybe we can go back to a slide. It might help.
What I was getting at is that just because it is a problem now, I don't see the point of expanding the problem just to bring in commonly owned parcels.
So are you referring to Title X versus Title XV as that?
Yeah, what was that actually what they were using in Title X? Compared to what now we're bringing in to Title XV.
Gotcha.
What the use was.
Maybe further back. I think it was right at the beginning, one of the first couple of slides, that one. So I'm not sure I completely understand the question. Sorry, I just wanted to point out again that that building is entirety, the entire building is within what now would be subject to heavy industrial suburban zoning. So yes, I suppose you're right. The Title X District of M one now converts to the current district of heavy industrial suburban. So yes, the the allowed uses now would be a bit different than they were then.
Right. And and taking advantage of that now trying to expand it to be a bigger to me, a bigger problem because of the because of the residential that gets all that right, impact.
I I can say that we do have in Title XV, chapter three thirty seven does have industrial standards that do place some discretion on the county to respond to complaints about noise, odor and other such, you know, impacts of development. Additionally, NDP would be required for air quality permits were the discharge from any future operation to to be found to be to be offensive or dangerous.
Okay, so going back on that smell, I think you'd be, people around here consider the peri forms not a smell? And somebody else might consider that a smell. So how's that determined?
Agreed. It's somewhat subjective. In Title three thirty seven, it does say, I think, that harm that would cause harm or objectionable, there's I I'd have to check the code, but there is some line kind of discretion reported to the community, I mean, to the code enforcement officer. That said, the industrial uses that would require air quality permits from NDP, I would suggest that we probably would be deferring to their standards. We've had these discussions before about other types of uses that have potential for odor. And there are some, some devices that are used to to measure odor. It is intended, or at least the code states that it's supposed to be at the property's boundary. I'm sorry, I wouldn't dispute the fact that it is challenging to to try and chase an odor down.
Yeah, especially since we we went through this with the wood treatment plan out there and chased it all over the the thing. It it's just something that we can't take care of by ourselves. We don't own the equipment to do so. It would be in depth and we'd have to call them out and by then the odor might be gone, but the damage might have already been done. And then it's a hearsay thing and which could get us into a lot of I I guess open up the legal battle that I really wouldn't want to participate in. I know that when they, I don't have I any idea what he's trying to put in a heavy industrial. He can do that right now, but I'll definitely be watching for when a scrubber goes down or something like that. And then it happened on those other plants out there where when the scrubber goes down, all of a sudden we got a bunch of neighborhood people complaining and they breathe that in and then what what's their consequence, right? What's the consequence of that? So to me, if it was, if it was, wasn't heavy industrial, I'd be all for it, but I'm not I'm not for changing it to have industrial. Any other comments?
But looking at this slide, it looks as though we're going from a smelly production of animal feed to an aluminum cast aerospace industry. I'm not sure how we're still considering the smell.
So let let me, let me, because I brought up the the smell of the guy coming over with the gun, the smell actually came from that pond. You know, so the the plant itself didn't smell. It was the pond, which is where they they put it out there.
Steve Wright, DA, just want to clarify today, you're considering the land use designation, not the use itself. So you need to be careful about what you base your decision on. This application, near as I can tell, is consistent with the master plan and is in best date from Title X to Title XV.
But while you're up there, but if it's consistent with the master plan, that means it it's an allowable thing, but it doesn't mean that we have to give it to them. Right? Light industrial might be a better fit.
Yeah, I mean, you're required to make the findings as Lewis's staff report points out, but I, a lot of discussion about the use can be problematic because you're not considering the use today.
I was trying to use those uses to to explain why the buffer should retain there.
Understood, but you just need to be cautious when you make your decision that it's based on the findings, not the use, proposed use or likely use for the property.
Any more comment?
One more question.
Mr. Hendricks.
So you're saying if they proceeded without doing the zone change at all, they could still put that business in place in that structure?
That's correct, Commissioner.
But by rezoning it, we can they can put even bigger.
Yeah, I mean, I guess bigger is. Yes.
And they can change everything from what they said to a completely different thing. So that could be a data center at that point. Or maybe that was the wrong one to use.
Right. I mean, any future use would be just subject to Title XV in time with hats.
Because we're not conditioning the zone, so.
I would point out that the cooling ponds there is accessory to the primary use that would occur on a building. I mean, wouldn't permit just a cooling pond. It's also currently located within commercial zoning. So that, again, from from our planning perspective, they were looking to extend the existing M one or heavy industrial suburban zoning for the rest of the site. So I mean, that's, that was their request. And when we, when we're looking through findings from a planning perspective and the required findings, which are only three, the consistency with the master plan was there and the existing development, so it was was there.
I guess I'm concerned that if we start approving based on staff findings and codes and whatnot, and based on a guy bringing the gun to a property saying now all of a sudden, are we encouraging someone to bring a gun across the street? And look, brought a gun across the street, we better not approve. We better not approve this that needs the master plan. So I don't know. I'm I'm struggling with what the guy got across the street is doing. I was just pointing out that it's so close to the residential that's across the street and I. And that and that's what I would look at. I don't know that I would I'm looking at it as a guy brought a gun across the street. Right. Any other comments? Any public comment?
Y'all know who I am and y'all know I'm against most master plan changes.
Please state your name.
Jim DeChambeau.
Thank you.
But in this particular area where you've got three parcels owned by the same person, all adjacent and right behind it, you have a refinery or very close to it, you have a recycling oil recycling facility. It seems like it's a no brainer to approve this. But then anytime I think it's a no brainer for you people, I'm wrong.
Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for motion. They said they aforementioned findings, and I do wish the applicant would have been here. I'm more inclined to probably not go along with this because you're not, they're not here, he or she. But based on the aforementioned findings, I moved the line County Board of County Commissioner approved the request from Nevada RE Holdings LLC for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning designation from Title X Districts of M one, General Industrial, C one Limited Commercial District and RR five fifth resident or fifth rural residential district, twenty acre minimum to the Title XV District of Heavy Industrial HI hyphen S Heavy Industrial Suburban, consistent with the master plan designation of industrial and three parcels totaling approximately nineteen and sixty eight hundreds acres at seventeen hundred east US highway fifty in Silver Springs, APNs zero one five two seven one one zero, zero one five two seven one one four, zero one five two seven one seven PLZ two thousand twenty five zero five zero, noting that there was direct access to highway fifty, not ninety five A and highlighting, I think I've said that about A and C, A, B and C. The proposed amendment is consistent with the policies embodied in the adopted master plan and the underlying land use designation contained in the land use plan. The proposed amendment will not be inconsistent with adequate public facilities policies contained in this title and the proposed amendment is compatible with the actual or master planned adjacent uses.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor say aye. Those against?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes three to two. Number fourteen, Commissioner, Commissioner appointments for possible action, appoint up to one member of the planning commission with the term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six. County Manager Andrew Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So with the resignation of Commissioner Ralph Ewing, we had a vacancy. We noticed the vacancy in the newspaper and followed the advertising procedures for a vacancy on the planning commission. And so we received two applications in the timeframe and actually we we just received two applications and so they're here before you today. We did notify the the two applicants that they had the ability to speak today. I'm not sure if they're here, but I actually.
I see one online.
We have a lady in chambers.
And one in the chambers.
All right.
Well, I guess we'll just start by when the applicant speak for themselves, we'll start within chambers. When the applicants speak for themselves, uh, we'll start within chambers.
Thank you to the members of the board for your time today. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about who I am and why I care about serving this county. Uh, my name is Terry Watford. I've been a resident of rural Nevada for twenty years. Ten of those years have been here in Lion County. Um, as a child, I grew up in a rural setting. Like many here, I've experienced both challenge and resilience from the hardships beginning with the Great Recession. To rebuilding a life in rural Nevada. That experience has shaped how I approach decisions. With balance. Fiscal responsibility and a long term perspective. I believe growth and change can bring opportunity. Lion County deserves thoughtful leadership that weighs benefits and costs carefully. My perspective is rooted in protecting what makes this place unique. While supporting opportunities that truly strengthen our communities. I have reviewed the master plan of twenty twenty. For Lion County, and I agree with the vision and the goals of that plan. And I see the need to provide measured. Density transfer, infrastructure cost sharing and tax benefits that encourage economic growth for the citizens of the county. There is so much that this county has to offer. And I would like to be part of guiding its potential. If appointed, my commitment is simple. Is to listen. To weigh decisions fairly and to keep the interests of the Lion County residents. Of this at the center of the choices that I make. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Move on to, uh, Katie Baker.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. My name is Katie Baker, and I'm here today to speak on my application for Planning Commissioner. As Secretary of the Silver Springs Advisory Board for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five, as well as serving as Chair in twenty twenty four. I am familiar with the Lion County Master Plan as well as Title fifteen. I have also successfully completed three open meeting law trainings with the county. And have a clear understanding of the findings that need to be met for project approval. I'm familiar with reviewing staff reports for items coming before both the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And have successfully led in-depth discussions at the Silver Springs Advisory Board meetings, gathering opinions and concerns from our board and the public. Forwarding clear and concise recommendations for approval or denial to both boards. As an informed and interested homeowner in Silver Springs, I'm looking forward to taking the next next step in serving my community. Serving on the planning commission would allow me to not only represent my neighbors, but allows me to make a positive impact through planning decisions for the entire county. Contributing to long-term, smart and responsible development and growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for? Katie Baker? And our team of motion. Oh, wait, public comment? And none. Do you have something to add?
Just gonna say before we get to a motion, uh, planning commission is a little bit different in that the chair. Um, is the one that makes the appointment and then the board approves, but.
Okay. All. My God. Motion to approve Katie Baker.
Second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Chair, you sort of called for public comment, but I don't know. Did you follow up on that? Was there any public?
There was no public comment. No one got up and no one was online.
I do want.
I want to thank you for bringing in and being here today.
Yeah, and I I would also like to thank you for applying and, uh. Uh, I've had the distinct pleasure of. Visiting Midas, uh, several times and. I s- I, uh, uh. I visited the, uh, saloon for dinner, of course, but, uh, sadly it was closed, but, uh. Yeah. No, but yeah, I. I do appreciate your, uh, your application.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to. Number fifteen clerk treasurer for possible action. Approve the clerk treasurer to participate in the statewide ballot contract for the twenty twenty six. Election cycle for the preparation and mailing the ballots and authorize the county manager to sign the contract on behalf of Lion County.
November, clerk treasurer for the record, um. The last election cycle for twenty four and we, I brought this before the board and we decided not to participate in it due to the fact that. That they were trying to outsource it outside of the state of Nevada. And at the time, um, I just didn't feel comfortable, which turns out to be a really good decision how that. Panned out. So I thank you for that. But this year they've actually came back and the printer that we used for twenty four that did an amazing job for us actually won the contract this year. So I'd like to ask that we join the contract. Due to the fact that it is a local printer, a proven printer and one familiar with the state of Nevada and the laws here. And has done a great job for us in the past and will save us quite a bit of. Funds, um, they don't only just refund per the, um. The AB three twenty four, I believe, was the bill. That allowed them to reimburse us for ballot stock and and mailings because of the paper ballots. But this way they cover all the setups and they cover the entire, um, fees, which saves us between seven and eight thousand dollars.
Comments?
I'm going to support whatever she, uh, recommends here because I know she really does her homework. And I trust her judgment.
There any public comment? Seeing none in room, none online. Bringing back to the board for motions.
Move to approve a court treasure to participate in the statewide ballot contract for the twenty twenty six election cycle. For the preparation and mailing of ballots and authorize the county manager to sign the contract on behalf of Lion County.
Second. Then move by Commissioner Hendrick, second by. It's been moved by Commissioner Hendrick, second by Commissioner Castanelli. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Sixteen Advisory Board for possible action, acknowledge the resignation of Marshall Hartman from the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board.
Good morning, Martha Tapia, the Citizen Advisory Board Liaison. Uh, my understanding is Mr. Hartman did provide the Smith Valley. Uh, Advisory Board with a letter. It was just misplaced. I attempted a couple of times to reach out to Mr. Hartman to see if we could obtain a copy of that and was unsuccessful.
Did they provide you with a the recording of them beating?
I didn't think to ask for that. No, I had the minutes. And attach them to the agenda.
Minutes are fine, right? Okay.
And, uh, comment, Mr. Hartman. Basically moved out. And, uh. Realized at that time he did. Resign from the board, but, uh, I was wondering where the letter went and. Here we finally have something about it.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room, seeing none online, bringing back to the board for motion.
I will move, um, to accept the resignation letter of Marshall Hartman from the Smith Valley Citizen Advisory Board.
Uh, second. Have a motion from Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to the county manager. For possible action, discussion and set a date to hold the first board meeting in January twenty twenty six on Friday. January twenty second, twenty twenty six, or another date selected by the board.
Andrew Haskin, line County Manager. So as the, um, item states, the first meeting in January of next year will fall on a holiday. And so, um. It, per our policy, it takes a board action to move that 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 date down. And so wanted to get the board's opinion on. Should we move it to the to the second, which is a Friday, or is there another date that the board has in mind? And take a look at that.
Um. With the holiday going on a Thursday. And Saturday the third. Um, it seems like we may have a lot of staff. That have extended. What would be, are there any ramifications if we go to Monday, the fifth?
We can do that.
That would be my preference.
That'd be my preference too. Any other comments?
That'd be my preference. People on a long weekend.
Comment's good to me.
Then the staff can enjoy the first. It's for possible action. So, you know, do we have any public comment?
Jeremy Campbell. I gotta keep it on the scheduled date. You guys are all hungover. It might be a better meeting.
Any other? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the board for motion.
Uh, Chair, I'm making motion with the, we hold the first board meeting in January, um, for, uh, Monday, January fifth at nine AM.
Second. Been a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. The possible action, discussion and provide direction to county manager to research, consult with the state of. State and story county officials and to develop findings and recommendations for future board consideration regarding the. Transfer of the Comstock Historic District and the Comstock Historic District Commission responsibilities and administration. From the state to story and Lion Counties.
Andrew Haskin, line County Manager. Um, so just to provide a little bit of background and then I will, um, turn it over to representatives from story county here or who are here to do a presentation. So in the last legislative session, the governor put forward SB seventy eight that. To consolidate a number of different boards and commissions around the state. Um, the Comstock Historic District Commission was one of the. The commissions on that, that, um, list to be consolidated. It was going to be consolidated with a statewide. Statewide, um, commission. Which would mean that people from all over the state, um. Including Las Vegas would have a say in, um, building matters and. Uh, story in Lion County within the historic district. At that time, story county to approach me about, uh. Potentially, um, trying to get an amendment to to remove that, uh, from the bill or to transfer it from, um. The state control over to the counties as a joint effort. Uh, and so, um, you know, through working, working through that process again. Uh, that bill didn't move forward. At the time I had said, yeah, I think that that would be a good idea. But now that that is not moving forward at the legislature legislature, um. In conversations with story county, they would still like to move forward with transferring it over to local control from the state historic preservation office. Um, I know that their board has moved to, um. Continue to explore this. And so they, uh, had approached me about that, um, putting an item on our agenda to see if Lion County was still interested in that. So that is what this item is about. That's a a brief background on it. Uh, Commissioner Clay Mitchell and story county manager Austin Osborne are here. Uh, to give a presentation and answer any questions.
Chair, Mission.
Welcome to the line again.
Thank you so much. Yeah, nice to see you. Kind of Clay Mitchell, story county commissioner. And, uh, one of my assignments is vice chair of the Comstock Historic District Commission. I served there as Commissioner Hendricks. Um, also with us today, Sarah Sturridge, our grants manager, has been working on this issue a little bit. I'm just going to give you a super brief history. I know, uh, most of you are familiar with it, but I just want to give a super brief history of the Historic District Commission. And and kind of how we got to this conversation. And I. Thank you very much, County Manager, for that that intro. Um, when when the Virginia City National Historic. Or the National Historic Landmark was created federally in the nineteen sixties. In the early seventies, then the state legislature went on to create this commission, the Comstock Historic District and and the commission. For the district was empowered to protect and preserve the landmark and the the history of the area. Uh, the boundaries roughly include Virginia City and Gold Hill and American Flat are are our side of the line and that Silver City Historic Downtown Dayton and the Sutra Town Site on your side of the line. And the composition of the board is a a commission member from each of the counties. Um, as well as community reps from various communities. And then professionals in applicable fields. There's a contractor rep and an architecture, an architect. And then a representative from the state historic preservation office. It has a small staff. It's currently overseen by the state historic preservation office, um. And really what the Historic District Commission does, its primary function is to issue a certificate of appropriateness. For new construction within the district or exterior alterations. As a check or a balance, there's no fee attached to that certificate, but it's to make sure that it's in line with the guidelines that have been put forth. Um, as was mentioned, the genesis of this discussion was the bill SB seventy eight that, uh, was presented. And, uh, at this point. A- as from the beginning, state leadership was open to alternatives. If they thought there was something that we liked better, and that's where the conversation started. I'm going to turn it over to our county manager, Austin Osborne, to to take you through some of those discussions. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Austin Osborne for the record, story county manager. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak about this with you, and I really want to express my gratitude to County Manager. Haskins, as well as Commissioner Hendricks and others on your team that really I have been open to discussing this with us, uh, wherever it ends up going. So, uh, Commissioner Mitchell, okay, talked a little bit about the structure of the Historic District and the commission. I just want to give you a short update of where we've been so far with the state, with you all, as well as, uh, where we're potentially going next. Uh, so as you're aware, Senate Bill seventy eight, uh, had gone to where it did. And we kind of asked a question when that bill, uh, went away with regard to the Historic District. Is, you know, what's going to happen in the next legislative session and those after it? We don't believe that this situation is going to go away. Is the idea of consolidating boards and committees and making changes to things? And we also looked at, maybe it's time for us actually to take a look at this. Most historic districts across the United States. And all of them in the state of Nevada, um, are run locally. They're not run by the state. And there's some interesting history why the Comstock is run by the state that goes back to the sixties and even before that period. It's interesting. Uh, so in that discussion, uh, we reached out to the state, to the state DC and our office, as well as the state historic preservation office. Who house, uh, that Comstock Historic District. And asked them, you know, what do you think about maybe exploring the idea of going local, uh, working collaboratively with Lion County, who also has the Historic District. And looking at what might work or what might not work. And maybe there's a way for us to take a look at some things that would normally help both jurisdictions. Bring the Historic District compliance into local control, but also maybe even help the state of Nevada kind of offload something that may be a little bit outside of its normal jurisdiction. So, uh, DC and R and Shippel in the state has been very receptive to the idea. They are currently working with the Deputy Attorney General's Office and their folks to see how maybe, uh, some moving parts will be addressed. And they're looking at, uh, with us some potential proactive and, uh, you know, other sensible ways to address the matter. We on our side are doing this. We're reaching out to our partners in Lion County to see what you think about this concept and idea. Uh, Sarah Spurts, who not only is our grants manager, she's also a principal on our team with extreme background. And historic preservation and compliance and these sorts of things. She's been a great resource for us in providing us some compliance and rules and regulations that we're taking a look at. To see what, not only what we have to do, but what we'd be taking on if we were to, uh, look at this. So some complexities that surround this area deal with multi-jurisdictional, of course. How do you do this in two jurisdictions? Nevada revise statutes, budgets, staffing at the state level. Where do they go? Do they just move over to the local level? Do they have to be rehired? There's a building in Virginia City that's designated for the Historic District. The state's looking at the ownership of that building and whether it can be transferred to local control. And then we're looking at things like code enforcement. Who will be doing the code enforcement with Lion County doing it on its side and us on our side? Or maybe for all these things, could we potentially look at interlocal agreements with Lion County? That maybe story county handles some of these things, uh, with your participation and collaboration and building some kind of agreement. Uh, one of the elements that county manager and Haskins that I talked about is trying to make this fiscally neutral or a zero impact to, uh, line county. A majority of the district is in story county, whether it's American Flat, Virginia City and the Comstock. Uh, but we would like to talk to you about the potential of doing something that doesn't cause you any fiscal impacts more than normal or more than you're willing or able to take. So really just the goals here in closing is really just complying with National Historic Preservation Act standards, protecting local communities and really allowing local control of a regulation of both sides of the line in the historic district, continuing to work with the state and ultimately if we do come to an agreement and the state does as well, we would start preparing for the next legislative session for, um, action that would be taken at that level to make these things happen in cooperation. So at this point, we're, uh, happy to answer any questions you have, but I want to remind us that the skirts is with us, she does have expertise in things I might ask the like to her itself. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the board? Go ahead, Commissioner Gaslinelli.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, thank you for being here today, so, um, I this whole thing is kind of troubling for me, um. As you may be aware, before I was elected commissioner, I served as the contractor member on the, on the Comstock Historic Commission, um. I understand from the governor's standpoint, the 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 want to consolidate some of the boards, but I didn't like what they had proposed. I guess my preference would be that it does stay under Shippel. Um, I do like the idea of the local control, but my concern there is the fiscal impacts and, um, our staff, you know, we're already struggling to keep up with permits, issuance and just having another layer of of all of that falling onto our staff is uh, you know, troubling, um. The, yeah, I just, I don't know, um. And I know story, you guys are fully capable of taking that over, but I don't want, uh, you know, my portion of the district, the 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 Dayton Historic District. I wouldn't necessarily want to, not that I don't trust you guys, but I don't want to turn over all of those decisions that happened in, uh, in historic Dayton over to to story county either. Uh, and 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 I really don't want an answer on where we go with this, but I'm I'm certainly not opposed to continuing the conversation, but, um, if it does go to local control, I, I I mean, I would rather see more than one line commissioner sitting on that board. Um, or maybe staff, I I I don't know, but it's just, yeah, I uh, I've got, I've got questions, I just, I don't know, I I I'd like to see where it goes. Um, but we definitely need to have those discussions more in depth at some point.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I I think the purpose of doing this is so that we can have those discussions and work through things and I think it's important to go through that process. So I would support it.
Commissioner. I, uh, I know one thing, if we rely on the state to do anything for our personal stuff, we're probably gonna get what we don't want. So I'd I'd be supportive of trying to figure this out to where we do have control. Fiscal impacts are are very important and, uh, ship them. You know, the interaction with them, so I want to move forward with it. You know, give you a direction to.
Chair. May I respond to a item that came up?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Um, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair Austin Osborne, story county manager for the record, I wanted to respond to Commissioner Castanelli, one item he brought up is very important. We have had consideration of the board makeup and what a new commission district board would look like. And Commissioner Mitchell, when I talked about, he can elaborate further if you'd like to his official representative, but to try to keep that makeup to safe, have a line county member and the different elements of the existing board be very similar in a new model. Regardless of jurisdiction, thank you.
We probably should have more since you guys get the building. Sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Clay Mitchell for the record and, uh, Commissioner Castanelli, thanks for bringing up those concerns, they're important. We've had some conceptual conversations around those because while we're willing to take on the financial burden of running this at the local level, we certainly are not trying to take on control on your side of the line, right? It's important to make sure that there's a good balance there and, uh, we've we've thrown around conceptually some ideas around under agreement, coming up with a way to, because regardless of how the land area of the district divides out, it seems that most of the activity falls on our side of the line.
Sure.
And the question is, how do we make sure we don't create bureaucracy? That's unnecessary, but still have the ability to properly carry out the function of the commission. And so I don't know if that looks like a, um, some some sort of a, uh, uh, an MOU that says when there's an issue that comes up or an application that comes up on your side of the line, here's how it's dealt with and it's it's kind of on a per use basis. Um, or some sort of a, you know, we're covering, uh, there there are different ways, I think, that we can, that we can deal with it, um. I'm confident that our staff's gonna be able to come up with some suggestions to put before both your board and our board to take a look at and then we can bat those around and say, does this meet the needs, does this feel right as far as a way to go? Um, one of the impetus from my perspective of looking at the local control is that uh, I don't feel like, how, it's a strange situation, we all sit on a lot of different boards and a and a lot of times they're each structured just a little bit differently. And with this one, the historic district does not oversee its own budget, even though by statute it could. Um, a- and so when we had, uh, key staff member retiring and and the state historic preservation office knew, it was announced that he was retiring, um. It didn't appear that they started the recruitment process for replacement until after the retirement actually happened and then it took probably six months to get someone in place. That put a lot of burden on the chair of the historic district board to pick up the slack as basically an unpaid employee in the meantime. In fact, I kind of laughed when the state said, uh, we had some changeover in staff and they said, please send us your plan for the transition here. And we turned around and said, please send us your plan for the transition, you guys do the staffing. So I think that's one of the biggest concerns I have is it 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 makes it hard for us to properly preserve the history when there's a bit of a disconnect or it feels like we're not, uh, at the forefront of their priorities. And I think that is one of the biggest advantages or biggest motivation on my side to take a look at this, thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
No, thank you, Chair, um. Uh, Mr. Haskin, um, does our staff have any, um, what are some of the positives and negatives that that, uh, you and your department heads have talked about?
Andrew Haskin, line county manager, so I think at this point, um, this item is related to kind of do direct me to go do the research and figure out, you know, with with story county what that would look like and so, um, you know, I have talked with Director Henderson about it briefly, um. You know, and code enforcement was definitely a piece of it that we talked about, this is department oversees that, um, and so, you know, I don't have an answer for you right now because I don't, we just haven't figured that out.
Well, given direction to to move forward with this, like what's stated here, uh, we got time. Right, and so I would like to bring it back to us, yeah, at kind of a rough draft or whatever workshop, whatever you need to do so that we can think about it and not rush through it a little bit, so. Because if we if we say something, it's gonna go back to you guys, uh, it's gonna be back and forth, so I'd I'd like to get it to where we can take our time and whose BDR does this go under? Story County, okay. We we have one we're working on already, so. Just wanted to bring that up. Well, we can get a legislator.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, yeah, uh, it's possible it could be carried by one of the state agencies through one of the the committees, um. It, we just, I just found out that we're gonna have this, uh, new state assemblyman, uh, because ours is retiring and, uh, you're looking at someone new as well, so there may be a way to have someone carry it for us. I think, uh, there's, there's interest, interest and opportunities to do that, I don't think there's a necessity for either of us to commute, commit our cherished BDR to this at this point.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Another question, thank you for coming down and visiting with us on this issue and I have a lot of confidence in our local, uh, people to take care of things and I'd like to see us continue this discussion.
Any other comments? And I have no, no problem with you talking to these two as you're going through that because they they both have a wealth of knowledge about that area. So. I just need to know what the end. Do we have a motion? Oh, public comment. It's almost done. None in the room, none online, bring it back for a motion.
Move to, uh, direct the county manager to research, consult with the state and story county officials and to develop findings and recommendations for future board consideration regarding the transfer of the Comstock Historic District and the Comstock Historic District Commission responsibilities and administration from the state to story and line county.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Castanelli, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you. Go ahead and have lunch in our county, spend your money. Seventeen C. For possible action, approve an interlocal agreement, city of Yount into part, to provide temporary county clerk assistant for the municipal court with the cost being reimbursed to the county by the city of Yount on a monthly basis. Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager, so, uh, the city of Yount Municipal Court, um, they were down a staff member and then they had a a turnover with the, uh, municipal court judge. And so they were trying to get caught up and so, um, disagreement is for, uh, sorry, um, this disagreement is so that, uh, our staff can help them get caught up and then they would reimburse us for overtime costs.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll go to public comment. Seeing none in the room, seeing none online, bring it back for a motion.
Move to approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Yount to provide temporary court clerk assistance for the municipal court with the cost being trimmed reimbursed to the county by the city of Yount on a monthly basis.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hawkeye Day, seconded by Commissioner Castanelli, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to agenda request. Administrative policies and procedures. One oh five, a commissioner member or elected appointed department head may request an item be considered on the future agenda either by making an oral request at a county commissioner meeting or submitting the requir- request in writing to the county manager at least thirty days prior to the meeting for which the item is requested to be placed on the agenda, do we have any agenda requests?
Yes, two, uh, items to look at, uh, first of all, I I know that, uh, Commissioner Castanelli turned in the traffic concerns to, um, county manager and I believe we have some that, uh, may still need to come in from the other commissioners if they decide they have some traffic concerns in their district. And as soon as those get in, then we can look at putting that on the agenda for our requests uh, for changes or or focused, uh, attention on different areas. Also, uh, I'd like an agenda item to discuss, um, the, um, administrative policy and procedures one dash eight and one dash ten, they are redundant. And we should look at those and consolidate and make any changes, uh, that we re- we might request as commissioners.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I kind of talked about this before, I'd like to see us consider requiring planning item applicants to themselves or have the representative present at advisory boards, the planning commission into this board, because I find it really difficult when they won't even show up to speak on their item.
Um, actually, I just, uh, this isn't necessarily an agenda request, but, um, there's a good chance that I will have to leave the meeting, our next meeting around noon. Um, as my son is getting recruited, uh, by a school to play basketball and his official visit is that Thursday, Friday and Saturday, so I may be leaving at noon, I just wanted to give a heads up on that.
And I want on the next, next agenda item, next agenda, an item for the NICO Rural Action flying caucus flying from November eighteenth through the twentieth in Washington DC and I'll send you over that information. Andrew. Done with the agenda request, Commissioner comments?
Um, uh, thank you, Commissioner Keller, um. I, uh, would like to remind everybody of the Smith Valley Fun Days coming up this Saturday and Sunday, expanded schedule. It's a lot more going on Saturday than in the past, there will be booths both days. And, uh, as I said, many other activities, the car show will still be on Sunday.
Um, I just wanted to briefly say that, um, Ed James with the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District has announced his retirement and I just wanted to thank him, um. I know he was instrumental in in helping the, uh, Dayton Valley Conservation District, uh, immensely over the years. Think he's got thirty years in there, uh, or some or more. And just wanted to thank him, recognize, uh, that, uh, he is, uh, stepping out.
Mr. Hendricks.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Jacobson, um, I just want to follow up on some comments that were made earlier, um. We have a great staff in line county. And we have, uh, I feel we have an obligation that we don't make them sure, uh, if they want to burn a personal day or whatever on January second, moving it to the fifth is not gonna alter alters, uh, county business at all, matter of fact, it'll probably, um, only enhance our meeting by having the necessary staff there. Um, and why anyone would be against that is is absolutely beyond my comprehension.
Thank you, uh. I had one thing and I didn't know whether to say it under commissioner comments or agenda request, but we are down a legislator, uh, for our county and with Douglas and they've, uh, they've done a recommendation from the state assembly. And so, uh, I don't know if that has to go on to an agenda item. Because I think there's a special session coming, I got notified when we were in NICO. Our, uh, our assemblyman notified me by phone.
Okay, with the after the meeting and we can talk about it, I have not been notified or, uh, provided a recommendation yet, so. Um, but we will take board action.
Ethan made a, uh, their their selection and I I know that's how it comes down, so they made their selection and then, uh, they notified the two chairs. So that's why I want to bring it now because there's gonna be a special session.
Perfect, yes, we will need to get that moving right away.
Okay. And moving on to any other comments before I move on. Okay, public participation, no action we take on any items properly agendas, do we have any public participation? Seeing none in the room, seeing none online. Bring it back, we're gonna go into a closed session, so. And we're recessing to a closed session, so. Everybody, yeah.